All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the city council work session. The first item on tonight's work session agenda is an update on grant applications. Good evening.
Good evening. So, John, can I just hit the... All right, so tonight, a few weeks ago, I promised you guys this option of, or the idea that we would look through everything we've got going, because I know we talk about these grants kind of piecemeal. It's hard to really convey the size of the package of stuff that we've got. So, this is just a quick review. First, we'll talk about some in-progress grants that we have. These are grants that we are actively working on, or we've got notice of award on. These first three are for Restore. Obviously, all of these are 100% funding. There's no match requirement from the city. We've talked about these for years now. But as a reminder, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is in progress right now, was a $650,000 total award with no match. Sewer upgrades, that's a $10 million total award with no match. And as a reminder, during the last meeting, you did award the construction contracts. So, we are removing with that. I would, I don't want to overpromise, but I would say in the next 12 to 18 months, we should probably be close to done with that. Then, working waterfront, we have a four, the original award that we got was for $539,266. That was for engineering. That was for all the meetings that we saw with GMC. There was no match for that. We have put in a request for an amendment, and we should have that in our hands for the next meeting for the $5,785,686 for construction with no match required. We originally had hoped to be under construction next summer. We found out during our last meeting, and I know I'll update you guys after our monthly calls, but we found out during the last meeting that there may be more of a six-month delay on that because Treasury, which is who gives us the money, asked to do more reviews, not just of ours, but of other in-progress, progress, progress work. Before I move on, does anybody have a question about these? All right?
Can I just question Treasury?
Do what?
I just question the government, Treasury.
Well, at least it's not me. That's a good thing.
At least they didn't blame it on COVID.
So, next up, we have the K-1 Center. You all know we've worked on this for quite some time. We've got 2.5 million from the Economic Development Administration with no match required by us, because we also have Department of Housing and Urban Development, $750,000 that will make that match for us. Because those are both, those are two completely different funding sources, and both are federal, we are walking through quite a lot of red tape right now, which we want to walk through. We want to do it properly and manage it correctly as we go. We have the Gayford Avenue Turn Lanes, Eastern Shore MPO funded for $593,975.08, and I appreciate that 8 cents from Richard, because I love it whenever we have just a, like a 1 cent or a 10 cent, and it always makes me laugh. Triangle Property, again, it's a grant with no match for $999,989. We are working on that now. I know the project team has met once. Unfortunately, I missed the walk on the Triangle Property last week, but that team has convened, and they are beginning to do work. Arts Alley, the project total for that is 1.687 million, with $1,350,000 and change funded by ALDOT and the Eastern Shore MPO, which is obviously not so bad. We have made some pretty good headway with Arts Alley in the last few weeks, and I expect that you will hopefully, knock on wood, see some progress on that in the next two weeks. So, that's, that's great news. So, we do have applications out now, a significant number of them. Two are for more Restore funding. One is for SSO mitigation. As a reminder, that was one of the three, four, one of the four that was originally put forth back in 2017, I believe, 1617. It was an SSO mitigation plan, but it was a plan for a study. It was a million dollars for a study. And we blessedly have a great administration that knows that that study is not exactly going to always give us what we need. We know what we have to have to mitigate SSOs. We know that those are generators for lift stations. So, with the blessing of ADCNR, we were able to restructure that project to get $1,096,000 for generators for lift stations. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's 20, I don't remember where Jason is, 20-something lift stations for us with, you know, a total of 79 or 81, 20-something lift stations having generators. That helps us significantly as we do look to mitigate SSOs. That does have a city match, so unlike funding previously for Restore, this is not 100% grant funding. That grant amount requested is $820,000 with a city match of $278,000 and some change. It's still a pretty great return on investment for city matching dollars. And then additionally, we have the stormwater inventory for $650,000 as well. We do have a grant application out right now for Homeland Security through ALEA. It's for $49,892 for safety barricades for parade routes and events. We did receive that grant a few years ago, and we were able to get about $50,000. And I think you saw those kind of roll out last year, the orange and white barricades that are easier for people to maneuver and safer across the board. So, hopefully, we will, we will get affirmation of that in the next two to three weeks, if we get it. There is no match required for that. So then, we move on to hazard mitigation. So, we have three hazard mitigation grant applications out now. Two are related to hazard mitigation for Hurricane Sally. That is the generators for lift stations. You'll continue to see us apply for money for that, hopefully. That total project amount is $696,000, with 522,000 of that being, are coming from hazard mitigation and FEMA. The other Hurricane Sally project is the safe room. You saw me here a few weeks ago, talking to you about the need to amend that budget and increase that budget. So, that project amount total is 2.7 million and some change. It's a little bit complicated, but because the city match is offset by the property appraisal value where we will be placing that safe room over on Pecan Street, our city match is, is kind of negligible at this point. So, we've got 2.4 million for that in grant funding requested. And then, the COVID grant, HMGP, we put an application in for a mass notification system that would replace our tornado siren that is on the Welcome Center. This total project amount is 57,680, and 43,000 of that and some change is requested from the grant. As a reminder for that project, because it's been a while since we talked about it, that is going in and putting these speakers on light poles throughout the CBD with the option to increase that footprint if we are able to obtain more funding. We have the EV charging stations grant that we still have not heard back from a decade on, though we do expect to hear on that hopefully soon. That grant amount was 198,000 with a city match of $50,000, but that is going to be provided by AMEA. Sidewalks at Fairwood and Blue Island for $999,092. The city match on that is only 199,819. And finally, ARPA funds. That application is out now. It's a $7.6 million project to replace water main at Treatment Plant Three. That is a 50-50 funding opportunity. And the one we have in development right now, that you'll see in two weeks, is turn lanes at Valanca and Greeno. It's an Atrip Two project. Total project amount is 1.5 million, and our match is 280,000. So, that's kind of a quick and dirty overview of what we've got going. But what you see tonight represents approximately $40 million in projects that we've got, that we're working on, that is, or hopefully will be grant funded. And if I've done my math correctly, it looks like only 4.9 million of that is a match by the city. So, it's an incredible return on investment for us as a city as we move forward. Now, I can answer any questions.
That's a tremendous amount of projects. I mean, and what you said, that's, that's a good return on investment. I know we're kind of capped at what we can physically handle and manage at one time, and great job on, on keeping, keeping all of these moving and just keeping your thumb on them and knowing where they're at. So, council, y'all have any questions or comments for Jessica?
I think my math is wrong.
All these projects? All right, let's go ahead and start with Councilman Burrell down there at the end.
Jessica, on the hazard mitigation grant through AM, AEM, I used to say AMEA, that's 696,000, approximately, how many generators was that? I can ratio it by the other, I guess.
Yeah, so it's seven lift stations, generators, and then three water treatment plant generators.
So, it was seven lift and three water?
Right.
And all of these are, all of these new or any of these being rehabilitated?
It's a great question. Are these, some of these being rehabilitated?
It's all new.
So, total seven?
About 27 lift stations and three treatment plants will get generators. Would that leave us with any treatment plants that aren't covered by generators? That's it, that was my question.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, please.
What was the, I was hoping I could find it in here, but I kind of skimmed through the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Right, for the K-1 Center? So, that's the, that was through Congressman Jared Carl's office. That's how that funding was run, was through HUD?
That goes with the?
K-1, correct.
The DDA grant.
Right, which gives us our match to that.
I got you. Very good.
Right.
Councilman Robinson, any questions? Great job. Thanks for the update and just keeping all that moving.
Okay, so that's good. So, I did not move it to the right place, but the sidewalks on Fairwood, they have been a, we will be getting a, we've received notice of funding. We do not have a grant agreement for that yet, but we will be getting that. So, I know Richard and his team have worked really hard for the last three or four years. They've applied for it religiously yearly, and so we are thankful to have that coming. And what you see here, I mean, this is the result of a good team working. This is what it looks like when a good team works together, and there's good leadership, because without it, there's no way we would be able to, to make this happen.
Yeah, I feel like that, that might be something good to just share with the public, just so they, they know what all we're working on and see that we've got people working behind the scenes to try to do this at a reduced cost to the city. So, thank you so much for that update.
Thank you.
All right. That was it. Next item up is committee updates. So, we will have plenty of time to go through the agenda tonight. Councilman Burrell, committee updates?
You know, the Airport Authority meets tomorrow, and we had a meeting recently, or since our last meeting, to discuss the litigation that we're involved with, Conlitt Motors, and we're trying to come to a settlement on that without me giving specifics, and here we are. If you want specifics, see me in private, and I'll try to catch you up to speed on that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other updates, or is that the?
Nope.
Councilman Martin?
Public School Commission Board met, had a good meeting. I think our three mil dollars are going good for our kids. John Wilson will give us a report. I think I may have gotten it today, as far as what those monies look like and how we're moving forward with those monies, he sent a spreadsheet. So, proud to be on that board, and I think that three mil is one of the better things that our community will be known for, that we did for our kids, because it's helping a lot of kids as far as resources. So, but that's all I have.
All right. Councilman Robinson?
So, the historic preservation, this meeting next week, is that right here? Is that October 12? I'm looking at my email, and it says the 12th. Is that, is that right? All right. And so, I'll report back on that meeting after it occurs, but outside of that, that matters.
All right. And the update I've got is that the Fairhip Library kicked off a capital campaign to help build out the upstairs. They're working on that financing and the funding of that. They've got a good chunk of the money already, already allocated or identified, but they, they do need to close the gap. So, I know they'd love some contributions, and, and really going to be a special, special space upstairs. So, go by the library, check out their plans, and certainly donate. I'd appreciate it. Next item up is department head update. So, Kim, just go around the, around the horn.
I just want to let y'all know that thank you for passing the budget, and it is on our website. So, for citizens, if you have anybody question or want to know, it is on our website. It's under the department and under Treasury. And when you go in there, there are links in there. So, if you go to Table of Contents, and you want to go to Streets Department, you can hover over Streets, and it will take you straight to the Streets Department page. Also, there's indexes in there that's, that's on the software, that you can also go find the index on the side and go to each department. So, I tried making it user-friendly. So, if you have anybody that's asked you about the budget, you can tell them where to go find it. And that's, that's what I have for.
Okay. Do you have anything on the agenda tonight that you want to address right here?
I think there's a joint on the agenda. It talks about the wellness program and what the wellness rates will be, and so I don't know if Mayor wants to start with it. I can fill in, and Cory's here also.
Yeah, I say, let's go ahead and do it. Not you, other Cory. Remember, we've got to come up with a different name for him.
I'm like, what?
So, as item number eight? Item number eight?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we've met with our consultant, and, you know, the past, I know, three years, we've been working on wellness incentives for our employees, and we've had about 50 employees that has, you know, has done the wellness program. And so, by recommendation of our consultant and meeting with Symbol, it's recommended that we now offer wellness premium rates. And so, what that premium rate is, is $50 a month if you choose not to participate with the program. So, you have to have a biometric screening done, and biometric screenings will be done between, I believe, in December, December 1st. December 1st will be biometric screenings for all employees that have not got their biometric screenings done this year will do the biometric screenings. If after your results of your biometric screening that you are considered high risk, then you will be required to do four, I believe it is, four wellness health coaching per year. So, you have to do those quarterly. So, once a quarter, you would be required to do those. What is in there is if you are a grandfathered employee, your health insurance is $50 per month, but if you choose to do your wellness program, it's zero. And then, each tier will go up $50 if you choose not to participate in wellness program.
What do you do if you miss a coaching session? What's the penalty?
Just reschedule it, right?
You could reschedule, but you, you have to do it in a quarter, so you need to, like...
Well, I don't mean you got, you couldn't make it. I mean, you just decide you need to go quit going to it.
Well, what should happen is that it's monitored this first year, and then, because you didn't follow the guidelines, you don't have a choice, but you're going to pay premiums.
The non-wellness price?
Yes. I mean, the penalty, the penalty is going to be, you know, if they just, they get their biometric screenings, and they're high risk, and by high risk, you've got to go for wellness, and you choose not to, you're, you're going to pay that 50, but then you have no choice the next year. You're going to have to pay that 50 per month.
And council and, and employees, I mean, this is something where we've talked about. Some of us have participated with, with Kim on this, and really, we just want to keep offering the best benefits we can offer, but the cost of health insurance is doing nothing but going up. So, in order to, in order to do that, we really need the biometric screenings, and we need to be able to identify any issues upfront and have kind of a proactive approach rather than the treatment after somebody's got a major health issue. The cost just goes through the roof. So, this is just about being proactive and trying to reduce the overall cost so we can continue offering good benefits to all the employees. And I don't, I don't think it's asking too much. I mean, I know people may not like that, but in order to, to offer what we're continuing to offer, we have to do something to encourage people to go through the biometric screening, so.
Yeah, and the biometric screenings helps us put a good health plan in place, so when we know what our population is, what percentage of our population, let's say, percentage of diabetics, then we know what kind of diabetic programs that we want to be able to put in place for our employees. We currently have, through our prescription program, if you are diabetic and you follow through the program, they have where you can get your syringes free, your testing material. But we've got to be able to know these, you know, be able to get this information, and for when they go to Symbol, Symbol to help them get put on the right medications. But, you know, in this last group of biometric screenings, the results were 50% of that small 50 number was high risk. So, we just need to be able to know what our population, you know, risk are, to know what kind of programs put in place.
And so, we tried to encourage everybody by offering gift cards and drawings and things, and now it's more, I guess, the other approach of being a little more, hey, if you don't do this, it's going to cost you, so. Now, the other, is the other benefit, is that out as far as gift card drawings and all that?
Unless y'all choose to.
Yeah, we're still offering the drawings. We are, we're still offering the incentives.
So, you got double incentive now to go out and do this.
So, it makes it every employee that does the biometric screening and does one coaching a quarter has, gets $25.
Yes, sir. You got a question?
I have another question. Just, we do have two employees that ask about, they're not on our public insurance. They chose to go with the life insurance, other than the work. So, how does that, just how do they handle that situation?
This program is for, is on our health insurance. You know, this money comes, for us to pay for the service, comes out of our health plan, which what contributes it is for our health coverage.
They're not on our insurance.
They're just not, this is not, this is only for people on our health insurance.
Yeah, thank you. Good question there. All right. Any other questions for Kim, Ms. Cier? Thank you, ma'am. All right, Jason, you want to go next?
There's only one thing that changes water, so it's on the agenda, on the council agenda, number five. You know, we've topped that up a good bit, you know, but I don't need anything from me on that. All right?
All right. Any, any questions for Jason on that? That's final adoption. He mentioned, we have discussed that, and that's where if the water usage exceeds a certain amount, then the, the cost for water is going to, going to increase for everything above, above that threshold, which is, remind me again, the gallon?
7,000.
7,000?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Jason on, on that item, or just any updates in general on water and sewer? I mean, I know you've got a lot going on right now.
We do. We've, just a little short overview.
Yes, sir.
Ingleside to Bishop on Fairhope Avenue, the sewer force main is complete, and we're actually pumping in it with two stations. So, Doghouse Lift Station, as we call it, and Fairhope East, or what used to be the intermediate school, that lift station's pumping in new force main. It go all the way to the wastewater plant, so. We, the contract to be completed, like the asphalt repair on Ingleside, and lining one manhole on Bishop just north of the school. The same company that's lining that manhole are also lining Valley Street Lift Station. If you remember, that's a rehab station that we're doing now currently, and they're supposed to be here tomorrow to start that. So, that carries into that project. As soon as that station's lined, there goes contractors, WR Mitchell, and they'll set pumps. That's, I'd say we're about 60, 65% complete, so we're well above, better than scheduled. We were saying Christmas, but I do believe we should have that station up on its own by Thanksgiving.
Okay, that's great.
With a little help from our electric department, we've got to pull another phase in. So, if everything goes well, we're shooting for Thanksgiving, okay? The Church Street project, same thing. The force mains in and complete. Fails Lift Station and South Section Lift Station are both pumping in new force main. And they're actually, they're now Gulf Coast Underground, and they're lining the existing sewer. That's the gravity line that was existing. It's been there for several years. They're lining it. Cambered it, cleaned it. It actually looks pretty good. So, this has just prevented maintenance lining it, so it doesn't give trouble in the future. So, that, hopefully, the utility side of Church Street is just about wrapped up. I can't speak for the other. The temporary lift station for Publix North is in. We're waiting on the contractor to tie the gravity in, but we're not going to hold Publix up. So, I know that's been on everybody's mind, but we, we got that complete. So, the temporary station's in, and it'll surpass the development currently, and then the new station will go in. Once that's agreed, everyone's agreed on. On the water side, the, we're going to open bids October 27th on the 24-inch water main. If you remember, that's the main from the side Walmart, the three-meg gallon tank to Water Treatment Plant Three. We had to do, and well, we wanted to do that. I think it was brought up by Mr. Burrell as well to advertise the southeast instead of just Alabama to try to get more bidders. We have currently seven plant holders. We're also having to advertise to the federal level because there is a possibility of having federal money on this job. So, we have seven plant holders now, and we hope to have more than that. So, every shot to get a good price.
No, that's, that's good.
If we can get it. We've had an update on the pipe as well, on both projects, on the new project that you all accepted a little bid on a couple of weeks ago for the sewer force main from Bishop to Publix. The availability of that pipe is quicker than what we first had got estimates from the three national vendors on ductile iron and on HDPE. So, both of those projects are supposed to have the pipe within three to six months. So, that's an improvement of what we had just a month ago.
Yeah, what did they initially estimate for that?
The 24-inch ductile was a year, and the HDPE on that 16 was nine months.
Okay, so that's a lot, a lot sooner.
Yes. So, hopefully, that's, meaning times are getting a little better on getting materials. And on Wellfield Three, we've had several setbacks on the new well. Right now, we're pumping pretty much all we can do. Today was 8.7 million gallons of the last 24-hour total. We have to shut Wellfield Three down to do the flow test on the new well, and we're not able to do that right now because of the water demand. So, as soon as we get some rain and the demand goes down, we'll be able to do that. We have to flow that well for 24 hours at one and a half times what we're trying to permit it with ADEM. So, we're trying to permit the well 1,000 gallons a minute, so we got to flow it at, you know, 1,500 gallons a minute. And we can't do that with the two wells running on side. So, this is going to take a little time. So, I can't, you know, depending on the weather and the water use, if we can get it down so we can shut the plant down, but right now, we're going to have to get the flows under 6 million gallons a day to be able to do that. So, you know, we need rain.
Which well are you speaking of here?
Treatment Plant Three. That's the new well, what we'll call Well 11, but it's out there.
Yeah, you can't get a consistent weather pattern down here, can you?
Yeah, it's either raining or not raining. There's no reason to wait until early.
Counsel, any, any questions for Jason? He's covering a lot of territory here on, on the water and sewer.
And that's, you know, that's what the contracts, and I count what our guys are doing, you know, the, the temporary station, the Publix, we did, the maintenance stations, and we've had, with the lower flows, getting to get some older calls, I think, around town, especially around the wastewater plant, you know, it's, with the low flows, the, the strength is a lot stronger, you know, so it's not diluted. So, we're working hard on to take care of that. We've changed in filter media out at some of our filter stations where we're actually, if you'll notice, coming down the hill on section on the right, those green boxes, those are odor control, and that's what they're for. We're actually changing media out now. The wastewater plant, because of the headworks and the pressing that they're doing down there, there's some issues there, but we're trying to alleviate that, too. It's just, so if you do get any calls for them, have them call us, and we'll talk, we'll go. I've been over on, above the plant there on Summit multiple times, talking to the homeowners there. We're doing the very best we can to control odor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Richard, before he gets back in that seat? How are you doing this evening?
Doing well. I do want to kind of update and share something on you. As you know, a while back, y'all awarded a contract to a team made up of Watermark and Watershed to work on the Triangle Property development there for the Gomesa Grant. And I... uh, development there for the Gomez grant, and I, I actually got to do something as part of my job that was actually real fun, and I felt guilty about being paid for it, but we, uh, we spent last Wednesday for about five hours walking the northern tract of the property. And I hate to admit this to you, that I've been under your employ for five years, I've driven by it, I've admired it, I've looked at it on aerials, I've seen surveys of it, I have really never really spent any time on the property, and, and I can tell you, we, uh, we started at the old Dias residence, uh, at the northwestern corner, and we literally walked the, the complete margins of Fly Creek, about a 35-foot contour line, all the way to US 98, Reno Road, then turned and actually came to the center of the property, and then turned and, and went back, uh, and almost ended up back at Veterans Drive, and then eventually walked our way back to, uh, the property. I, I can tell you, it, it is really a gorgeous piece of property. Uh, it has got some unique features in it, uh, there was an excitement in the design team, we were almost ready to lay out a trail right then and there, and, and get going on it. Um, but I, I can tell you that I, I think that it is a, it is an asset that, that really can, uh, become just an, an additionally more important part of the community life of, of, of Fairhope. And, and the biggest challenge is, is the excitement of the design team is that we are working on a budget, so we, we, we can't get overexcited, but as you know, part of the contract you issue is a master planning, which is going to kind of be that where we are in five, 10, 15, 25 years, and then, of course, the park, which is what Gomez is, is, uh, the initial boundary trail, trailhead, some restrooms, outdoor classroom and things of that. And it's going to be a tough job in the sense of picking where to put the outdoor classroom, because we, we found about 12 great sites, uh, just in our, in our five hours of walking. So we're, we're excited about that, and, uh, I know, uh, the mayor has recommended a, uh, basically a stakeholders consultant, uh, and we've got our first meet coming up, and many of y'all are serving on that, and, uh, I think you're going to start seeing some great ideas from the design team, and, and, and then kind of showing where it would look like in space on that property. But that was just, I thank you for letting me do that. It was a fun day, and the weather's fantastic right now, so it was a great day for a walk in the woods. Um, there's another update, because it's one of those projects that just never seems to get going, but we did get confirmation, we're going to issue the notice to proceed for the Gayford Road Turn Lane Projects on December 5th. Uh, they did finally get confirmation of the signal equipment being in by January, so they can start construction, and then when, when they're finished, they're finished. Um, as the mayor noted, we did receive notice of award for the 2023 TAP grant, that's sidewalks on Fairwood and Blue Island. And the significant thing about this, we're going to be putting in, uh, about 1.25 miles of new ADA compliant sidewalk in a suburban area of the city that doesn't have sidewalks right now. And the greatest thing is it connects all of those neighborhoods to the schools, to the, that are to the north and to the west, as well as to Fairhope Avenue, which is a direct route into downtown, so that, that's just a wonderful connectivity, uh, opportunity. The good news of the night is I only have two things on the agenda that I can comment on. Number 13 is just, we're requesting a first extension of the renewal of the contract for pest control, which I know is a pressing matter with the council, but we do support pest control and, and hope that you will support the, uh, extension of that contract. And then item number 15 is, uh, awarding the contract and authorizing the mayor with Effraim Associates, and this is for our environmental historic preservation, as well as cultural resources for the K-1 Center, which has to be completed in advance of specifically the HUD grant, but it's also applicable to the EDA money as well. And I can answer any questions.
All right, uh, any questions for Richard, council? Any comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate you walking that property. I think Art knows his stuff, doesn't he?
He's entertaining, too.
All right, so thank you. Let's see, Conrad? Nothing? All right. Uh, Jeremy?
So not gas related, my sister just had her baby while we've been in this meeting, so.
Whoa, congratulations.
I got a new nephew, um, and they're in Chattanooga, so.
Congratulations.
Eight pounds, 14 ounces, so got me a new nephew that just got here about 30 minutes ago.
Fantastic, man, congratulations.
Gas apartment's been going good, not a whole lot of updates, since last time we met, we did finish putting, installing the four-inch gas main down 13 from Highway 32 to Highway 34, to give us a feed feeding back into our system. Um, I got Wes here with me as well tonight, the only thing we have on the agenda is item number 12, and it's for the engineering of the cast iron replacement of the leak prone pipe.
So I'm going to elaborate on that, um, contract a little bit, you know that we currently have a million dollars in the budget for that contract. Um, when you look through your paperwork, you'll see $200,000, and that's going to be for the leak survey and, um, the atmospheric corrosion. Um, that has to be done before you start the engineering. The other 300,000 is for everything else they have to do, evaluating our system, looking at our GIS, and, and everything else. There's no real way to come up with a specific dollar figure for that, until they get in there and they start looking at whatever they're going to need. So we thought we'd put 300,000, hopefully by that time, they'll come back to us and say, this is how much more work we have to do, we can quantify it with this dollar amount, but right now, this is, this is where we are. So, um, I hope that that's something that y'all can feel like you can pass, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Council, any, any questions, uh, while Jeremy's up here regarding, regarding item number 12?
So, make sure I understand this, so, the 500,000, it may be more than that, you said, we don't know.
Correct. And 500,000 of it is not just engineering, 200,000 of it is for the leak survey that they have to do to find our most critical areas in the, in the corrosion part of it. Then the other 300,000 will be for any of the other things they have to do to evaluate our system and to, to look at it, to, to do, you know, to develop a plan, to engineer a plan for us to be able to put out for bid.
So it was hard for them to give us a not succeed price, and it was hard for us to come up with one, because for one, they haven't seen our information. They're requesting three years of leak reports, they got through the atmospheric corrosion, you know, they don't know what it's going to take, they haven't seen our system yet, they haven't dove off into it. So it's hard for them to give us a, hey, it's, it costs this much money for us to re-figure, you know, they don't know how many miles the main is going to be, how many services is going to be, so, you know, for them to dive off into that and start developing a plan, obviously, we needed to start paying them for that work. We didn't want to just leave it blank and let them spend a million dollars without coming back to the council, but we felt like with the mayor's approval that are with her guidance on this, that 200,000 for the leak survey, atmospheric corrosion, that gives them 300,000, that gives them enough to really dive in, so, and it may be enough to complete the project, it may not be, but that would give them enough money to say, hey, we know where we are, we're at this point in time, we need this exact, this exact amount to finish this project then now. Now by then, they will know more about our system, capacities, and everything that they're building a gas system around. But right now, it's, they don't have anything until we give it to them, until they start working on it.
There are the rights to go in.
You know, I, I, you have to trust them at some point, I mean, because you, you know, you just, you get in there, the other problem with that is, once you get 500,000 dollars into them, they go, well, we're almost done. You ever heard of Space Station? You know, Boeing wanted a billion dollars to do that, and they got a billion in, they go, well, another billion ought to do it. So, you know, when you get, when you get pulled in, it's hard to get out, when you don't know the cost.
Leak survey, atmospheric corrosion is ours, those reports they have to give to us. So once they do a leak report, the leak survey and atmospheric corrosion, those are ours forever, you know, so we're going to, we're going to fix the leak, they have to give us all that information. So that's what it costs is outsourcing, so, but the 300,000 is.
I don't, I mean, it's a fair argument, I just, you just hold your nose and hope for that.
Threw 500,000 at it, knowing that y'all might come back and say, no, we want to do 200,000, because, to be honest, I mean, we've met with them, we've talked to them, you know, we've looked at the references, I think they're a good team, they've got a lot of municipal experience, um, not only in gas, but in other, other areas. Um, one of the ladies who is part of the team, she's actually, she's a expert at Munis, the utility side of Munis, so, I mean, I felt really good about the team that was in place, but you just don't know. I mean, we could say 200,000, and they could come back, or you could say 100. I don't know that 100,000 in today's world is going to get, get us very far. That's, we just, you know, use the 300,000 number, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, it seems like we just, we just don't really know what to guess, I mean, my only concern, and, and, you know, I, I think you got to, at some point, you just got to trust that who you're working with is going to give you a fair price and a fair deal, but some, you know, something Councilman Burrell would say from time to time, are we going to get this back 499,999, because they know this is what the number is, or, or do we just say, hey, we're approving this, and, and then y'all can monitor it and just know that, or hope that they're giving you the best deal. Yes, sir.
If I were in your seat, I, I would be asking me, what are we going to get? You know, when, when we get to this 500,000 number, what are we, what are you going to hand me? One, we're going to hand you a, a risk ranking of our system, and so we're going to look at this thing, and we don't know right now where our most at-risk piping is, and so we've got to go find it. And part of that finding it is when we rode around that day, we looked at all of this piping that's above ground, and you, and I think, Jay, you mentioned, it was like, I, now I can't not see these things, because every house that we drove by had an HPR station, what we call an HPR station out in front of the house, and so they're going to go to every one of these above ground, we, we think it's somewhere between 48,000 and 50,000 above-ground structures in our system, and they're going to analyze all of this from a leak standpoint and an atmospheric corrosion standpoint, and go, okay, we feel like that we need to start our engineering in this area, A, is it alphabetically, numerically, I don't know at this point, but, you know, we're going to, we're going to say, this is your most critical area, and we're going to start here. And so they're going to start their design based on this survey. And so basically, what we're creating is a very advanced baseline, and we're going to look at that after we create this baseline and say, okay, here's how we need to finish the design based on the information that we've gathered. And if we had that information, could we save some money in this? Yes, the fact is, we don't have it. So we've got to go gather all of this information, and part of, a significant portion of this 500,000 is going out, surveying our system, gathering the information, creating this risk ranking, so that we can say, okay, we want to attack zone A as quickly as we can, throw all, all of our assets here first, so that we're mitigating the most risk first.
Right.
And so that's what you can expect to get, because I would ask me, what are you going to bring me? Are you just going to bring me another request for more money? Maybe, maybe not, but we're, you will have a product at the end of this portion of the contract. It's, this is not just a dot, 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 give us some more money.
Okay. Thank you for coming, speaking on that.
So you said, councilman.
No, no, go ahead, you're good.
So you asked, you said there was 48,000, is that linear feed, or?
No, sir, that's, that's literally numerically numbered above-ground pipe features in our system.
So is that one of the ways that you kind of came close to a not succeed number? Since you have that.
It really wasn't, so, really, if, if you break this thing down, it's not 500,000, it's 200,000 and 300,000. I don't know if they add to five, but we look at this thing really separated.
I get it.
That 200,000 is going to be a leak survey, which we're federally mandated to do, an atmospheric corrosion survey that we're federally mandated to do. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to check a, a mandate box, but we're also going to take that information that we get from that box, and we're going to use it to build the baseline, to then take that 300,000, use the information that we gathered with the 200,000, and start the divi, the, the design of the replacement project.
So what I'm saying, that 300?
Yeah, the 200,000 is a, is a line drawn in the sand.
That's right.
This is how much it costs.
Let's make sure it remains a, a cast iron replacement project, and not a, let's redesign the entire system project.
Right, so, we're real careful not to say cast iron, because we're dealing with two different things in the fact that we, we coined, well, FEMSA coined the phrase leak-prone piping, so we could potentially have a north-south street that is cast iron, an east-west street that is separately protected steel, and then another cast iron, where we look at a risk ranking, and that separately protected steel could be way more at risk than our cast iron, because when you start looking at catholics, so I'm not going to bore you with catholics, but that pipe could be corroding at a significantly faster rate than our cast iron because of the, the makeup of the pipe. One's acting as an anode to the other, it's protecting it, but it's the sacrificial lamb, per se, for the system, so in, in our, in our redesign of that portion of leak-prone piping, we're not addressing any of this polyethylene pipe that you see, the yellow pipe that goes in, that's all plastic, we're not worrying about that, that's a significant portion of our system. But there is a large portion of our system that is what we would consider leak-prone piping, and that's separately protected steel that's not cathodically protected and cast iron.
It all ties into the government grants as well, as far as getting rid of the galvanized, the unprotected steel, the cast iron.
Well, I appreciate that you mentioned that those two components were government mandated as well.
Yes, sir.
For replacement, right?
Absolutely, that, that is a, that is a annual cycle that we have to do, and so we are checking some federal mandate boxes in conjunction with getting some information that we're going to need, that they can't design this replacement project without.
My question was, is the 300,000 going to cover all of the 48,000 such and such that you're?
The 200,000 is, yes, sir. The 200,000 dollars is for the survey, the survey is going to cover all of those and all of our underground piping, so this is sur, leak surveying and atmospheric, atmospheric corrosion only happens above ground, but leak surveying, we're leak surveying every inch of our gas system.
And then, just to be clear, what does the 300 cover?
That's, that's going to get into the design, and so, once we get, once we get the information from the 200,000 leak and atmospheric corrosion survey, we will take that, we'll build a risk ranking, and we'll start designing the leak-prone piping replacement project.
So what I'm questioning, what I'm asking is, why wouldn't they know what it would take to design 48,000? Just a dumb question, but I'm asking.
So the 48,000 is a little misleading, so 48,000, we're only talking about above-ground structures in our system, so we're not talking, so, our system is roughly 581 miles long.
Okay.
So that is only, the, the, the num, the 48,000 number is a number of above-ground features.
Got it.
So when they go in and we say, let's just take Fig, Fig Avenue, you've got a cast iron line running down the middle of Fig Avenue, you know, well, does this design now, we put a main on each side of the road, on, on, in the new system of four-inch polyethylene on either side of the road, now, or do we redesign this where we go with one pipe on one side of the, at this point, we don't know. I, I can't look across this booth and give you that answer, but I will be able to give you that answer once we get to this point in the design.
Yeah, I, I understand, what I'm asking is the 300,000.
Yes, sir.
How did we come up with that number is what I'm saying, like, what, what was even the, the thought process to just say, let's just throw?
Where did 300 come from?
Yes, where, where, like?
There was, there was no, we, we don't, we don't know, that, we came up with a 300,000, we knew the 200,000, we could, it was going to be the leak survey. The 300,000, we had a million budgeted, we don't, we don't know, I mean, to be honest.
I give you baseline.
Yeah.
If it was 10% of the, of the cost of construction, that would be a $3 million project. We know it's going to exceed $3 million.
Yes, sir.
So it's a low number problem.
It is a low number.
Is that fair enough to say?
I feel like, I, where, where my thought process, and I'm not speaking for Jeremy or the mayor or anybody else, but my thought process on where that number of 300,000 came from, is I looked at this thing from a scale of 0% to 100%, and I felt like at this point in this, this stage in the process, we will have a product, we will have something that we can bring to you and say, okay, this going forward is what we're looking at from a dollar amount, from a, a time from inception to completion, this is what we're looking like from a material standpoint, this gets us to where we can have an answer to your questions, because right now, I don't have an answer to your question.
I, I think we got it, I mean, that's a good enough, I just, you know, yeah, instead of just putting a number out there, I think the 10% with the three, say, we say three, that's what we were thinking, so we got the 300,000 with the 10% engineering.
Right.
Cost on the total, you know, instead of just, you know, I think that's a.
The number is probably going to be more like.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but at least we know where we're thinking and how we got to that, you know, yeah, okay, very good, sounds good, man.
Any other questions? All right, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
Jessica, you, you covered everything you need to cover, or you got some more?
We have to talk more, but we're good.
All right. Cool. All right. Cory, anything for you, sir?
So to kind of piggyback on what Kim said earlier, our benefits fair is coming up on October the 25th, about lunchtime. We're meeting with Simble tomorrow morning to finalize some language and get together some communications for our employees about the change of insurance. We did a big push two, three months ago and didn't see much headway there. So we're going to try to take a different track and just clearly communicate. And you guys could talk to your staff, too. That'd be helpful. But that is, that is our update.
Would, would you be covering item number seven, or would that be the mayor? All right. Mayor, all right. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paige, do you have anything?
So, a couple of things. We are meeting, obviously, next Monday night for council. But prior to the meeting, we are going to be welcoming the Alabama Department of Tourism. Lee's Intel is closing down all the welcome centers in the state of Alabama for three days, and we are hosting them here in Daphne and Fairhope along the eastern shore. So their trip to Fairhope will be Monday, the 24th, and they will be eating lunch here and having two to three hours to shop in downtown Fairhope. So we have put together a little itinerary. We would love for y'all to join us. Y'all will be getting an email from me or Gail. And so it's a great time for us to kind of show them our area. These are the folks that are the front lines in the state, as folks are coming in and out of the state lines and telling them, you know, what great things to do in Fairhope. So we want to welcome them and have a great, great time while they're here. So again, that's on Monday, the 24th. But one thing, we've been meeting back and forth with the mayor and chief hauling his head about, is the downtown trick-or-treat. We have that event alongside the downtown Fairhope Business Association on the 29th of October. And every year, we've seen it grow and grow and grow. So we wanted to get y'all's blessing for shutting the streets down. We have just really seen a lot of scary, almost accidents with young kids and cars flying through downtown during that time. So chief has taken a look, and Lieutenant Nolte, and again, mayor. And we are looking at shutting down the tee just for two hours until noon, from 10 to noon that day. We're going to, you know, again, with y'all's blessing, hopefully, we'll have the two new DARE cars that are going to be wrapped and deliver. They've, they've been picked up, correct? So we're hoping to have those wrapped and have some of our SROs out. Chief Ellis was going to bring a ladder truck down, so we're going to have some fun things. We've got a DJ coming, and so we wanted to kind of make it a fun street party, but also safe for all those families that get to come out. You know, a lot of those folks who maybe go to East or go to J. Larry Newton, who don't get to participate with the downtown trick-or-treat, like Wes does, you know, we see a lot of those kids come down. So we wanted to, again, see if y'all had any issues with us shutting down that street.
You going to bring a resolution to us next meeting?
Next meeting. Counsel, any issues with that?
No. If you've been down there and seen the amount of kids that we have come out, it's crazy.
It is. And as it continues to grow, which we love, but, you know, we just obviously want to be safe.
And it's not just Fairhope people. I mean, you see people from all over Mobile, Ballin County that come here for that, too. So it's.
Yes. We gave away, I think, 1,000 candy bags in less than two hours, so.
What streets would that be specifically?
Chief, we had talked about doing the tee, so from, on Section Street from Magnolia to Johnson, and also from, you know, on Fairhope Avenue, from Church to Bancroft.
And that's the business?
We have talked to the merchants, we have talked to the businesses. We've sent out an email. Alex has sent out an email, kind of getting their feedback, polling those folks. And then we also made another announcement at our monthly meeting. And a lot of, I would say the large majority, we did have a few, but the large majority did agree with the fact that they would like to see the streets cut down, shut down for safety reasons. So we will bring a resolution for y'all next meeting, if that is okay. And then I do have appropriations on here. If y'all have any questions, I'll do my best to answer for community development, those with our city partners, you know, that submit letters. And I do believe that, that Kim and Isla attach those with y'all's budget, those letters with y'all's budget. So y'all should have a copy. But if you have any questions, again, I can do my best to answer those.
So how many of those would you be covering? All of them pretty much?
Yes, yes. 16 to 32.
16 to 32. All right.
I thought last year, we shut the streets down for the trick-or-treat with the businesses.
We have never shut the streets down.
There's so many people out there, it probably looked like.
Because what police were out there, I.
We do always have PD out, and they, we have put them at the intersection, but it still doesn't seem to slow folks down, so.
Okay. Because I know, I was there.
And it doesn't slow little children from breaking out into traffic, you know, running away, running to the next door.
Yeah, yeah. I just, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And council, all these, all these items, they're budgeted items, but does anybody want to just ask Paige, any questions on 16 through 32 whilst he's here? These are the appropriation items that were included in the budget.
Counselor President?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions about these. I'm trying to find the one.
Okay, 29, yeah, 29's.
Yeah. The, what I want to just make a comment on though is the.
It's a lot to read through.
Where's the money that's given by, there it is, number 25.
AMEA, yeah.
Yeah. We give the, that's the money from AMEA, right?
Correct.
I just wanted to make the counsel, mayor, I think you're probably aware of this, that they did increase our appropriation by $5,000 this year. We just need to decide what to do with that $5,000.
So instead of 20, we actually getting 25 from them?
Instead of 20, and it's a combination of two or three different grants. The total is 20, but that, that EDA fits the definition for what we can use that money for. Mayor, do you have an opinion on that? Have you given any thought as to what you want to do with that?
I just put it on the calendar, I put it on my calendar for after the first year to kind of look at. It's actually $30,000.
So it's 10 more?
It's 10 more. There's two $5,000 pots in this one.
Okay, two $5,000, wrong, I stand corrected then. Two additional $5,000 grants.
And, and you're limited on what you can?
Yeah, they restrict it, right.
So.
I think it's limited to the economic development.
In community.
Okay. Is that something y'all just want to, you got on your account?
I thought it was fair to tell everybody about that.
Something we budgeted. If something comes up, you know, we know we would like to use it and bring it back to town.
So did we budget the whole 30?
No. We just appropriated it at the last meeting.
That's okay.
And that was a request made from the Economic Development Alliance. And yes, that money just passes on from AMEA.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I believe everybody else has stayed.
Fairly consistent.
With 2022.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, Paige. Chief, I know you kind of slid in. Did you have anything for an update or any items on the agenda? All right. Well, let's go ahead and go through the agenda while we've got some, some time. So Jason will be covering item number five. Item number six, that ordinance on the medical cannabis dispensary. Who would want to handle that in the conversation? Would that be chief, Marcus, I mean, mayor, would you? Does anybody want to go ahead and discuss this right now, while we've got some time? Do y'all have any comments?
I've got a couple of questions, Counselor President. I mean, this, this seems to, the ordinance authorized the operation. I just want to make absolute sure and be perfectly clear that this is not the final adoption of an ordinance, and that somebody can open up a dispensary wherever they want in the city of Fairhope, based on anything that would be, it'd be introduced tonight and voted on at the next meeting. But I know we had had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about, you know, limiting where we would allow this. And there's already limits within schools and stuff like that. But there was talk about limiting and not allowing it in the CBD and things like that. So I just want to be very clear that is that this would not allow somebody to pick and choose their location.
Well, it's going to depend on the zoning, and I think that's where it's going to be, it'll be different, that we are going to have to come back. Hunter's well aware that we're going to have to come back and talk about the zoning and where they're located.
We don't have it adopted before we allow it, then they can go into.
They won't be able to do that until December anyway, because the state does not approve them until December. So we're going to be, we're going to need work on the zoning between now and then.
Yeah, that has to go to planning and zoning for recommendations to the council, and it has to get an ordinance here. I mean, it takes several months.
Could take that long.
I don't want them to have a loophole and then wind up getting, putting one where we don't want one. Can we add to that ordinance?
I think we could prob, well.
Can we add to that and say, where is, we would not be allowed to go in the CBD?
Subject to zoning?
Or subject to zoning?
Subject to being adequately zoned or to be deter, I mean, I don't know.
Marcus, you got a thought on that? If you don't have it in place.
We won't have it until next week or two weeks from now. That's a layover, correct?
Yeah, but it's not going to be any zoning jurisdiction for a while, or will it just fall under general business? I'm afraid it'll fall under B2.
No. We have a, I think we talked about using the medical overlay.
We talked about it, but Jack pointed out, we hadn't nailed that down, I don't think.
In the third paragraph, you basically just say, the operation of dispensers within the municipal corporate limits and zoned accordingly. And then that way, that will give you, that would give you some to get an act of legal ability.
Yeah, if we could say where, where, where allowed by ordinance. Can we say where allowed by ordinance? Because we hadn't put it in that ordinance yet. But that's what I'm saying, I don't know, I'm not sure that somebody couldn't challenge that and say, I'd put it in B2. It's a drugstore or whatever.
You're saying after we do the final, though, right? Correct? Jack, is that what?
Only after passed.
We got to pass this first, right?
Well, he's saying we need to have some place.
Yeah, but you got.
But the language would be.
But that might be as soon as two weeks. We're not going to have it in the zoning ordinance in two weeks. It's impossible.
Right. So before we would pass it, we would put language in it to minimize?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
I'm asking for somebody to tell me a definitive answer, because these things have a way to bite you if you don't get it right.
Do you want to wait till we make the zoning changes, to only allow certain?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, Marcus. I'm just suggesting that if we pass something in two weeks, somebody go out and buy a piece of property and say, look, I was reading your ordinance, and I believe that I could put it here. And then we say later, you can't. And they turn around and sue us, say, well, I bought this property to put this here. Now you're telling me I can't do it.
Can we not just add that, where it says, the third, the third paragraph, it just says, operational dispensers within municipal corporate limits and where allowed by zoning?
I would say where, where expressively allowed by, expressly allowed by ordinance. That mean, that, wouldn't that kind of imply that now you're saying you're going to say exactly where it's implied they can go?
That's, that's how I would take that.
Because right now, our ordinance, our zoning says nothing about it, right?
Right. Silent. So you're going to find somebody that can interpret that zoning ordinance to allow somebody that dispenses medicine in certain areas, and they're going to say, this is what this falls under. And they'll challenge it.
We talked about eliminating from the CBD and also maybe doing a buffer zone or may overturn.
So you could say something like, to be located only where expressly permitted by zoning ordinance or by?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah.
And the zoning ordinance won't be enacted until later, so they wouldn't have anything to go on.
Well, that's why you say expressly, because if you don't have anything expressed, there's.
Expressly allowed by zoning.
And then if you change up what's, what's here right now, too, is there, do you have to go back and re-advertise? I mean, but you would lay it over right now anyways.
Trying to get that language right before we introduce it tonight.
Correct. Because you can't come back and change that next two weeks from now and make it, you know, some change.
Depends on whether or not you think that's a material change.
The ordinance is not advertised until after you've adopted it, it's not a zoning ordinance.
So that map that we all looked at, that pretty much fell within the state regulations, and it pretty much cornered them anyway, correct? Is that what I was seeing? That map? It pretty much cornered them because we went and selected the thou, where they could, where we would be violating the state laws. I'm just trying to, I'm just asking.
No, not necessarily. It's just those, I hope you see those circles, but there's, there's just, you know, hundreds of places in between those circles you can go. Those were just the, just, just to keep out zones due to daycares and schools.
Yeah, that's the, that's the state law. Right.
But that's the, that's the minimum restriction, not, not whatever we decide. Because we talked about some additional restrictions.
Yeah, that's the minimum. But what I'm saying, that map, what I saw, it seems to have cornered them because of those minimal restrictions into a certain area.
So I'm trying to put this map together.
Yeah.
And this map, basically, is going to show you where the medical overlay district is, because that's what he, he said that you might want to look at that area. And also then eliminated, you know, he put the central business district down here because he was talking about eliminating that portion.
Is he suggesting that it possibly only exists in the medical overlay district?
You could do that, he said. I mean, that's an area where you would, you could look at. But that, we haven't decided that yet.
We haven't decided. I know there's information that the people are wanting to put it in, in different areas, you know? You know, shopping centers, we misspoke at the last meeting.
Yeah, you can do a shopping center.
You can do a shopping center.
It does not have to be a standalone building.
It does not. You can do, you can do it.
They changed it. It was that.
It has to do with the parking. It has to do with the park, something with the parking.
So it can be attached to another building.
It can be attached.
And what are the restrictions, again, on what kind of building it can be or cannot be attached to? Or are there restrictions other than?
Churches and schools.
Churches and schools.
On the standalone or the shopping center?
On the shopping center.
Either way, what?
It has to have its own ingress and egress. There's some parking, it has to have designated parking. So like, you couldn't put it in a strip area where all the parking was shared.
Right.
It has to have designated parking.
And so we really don't have that.
So there's not that, so that's, so it can be in an attached thing, but, but with that language, it couldn't be downtown anyway.
Couldn't be downtown.
There's no designated, individual designated parking.
And so that's what I'm saying. So, but we can layer it, you know? I think we can layer it.
Nothing you'd say, I think, Jack, I think your modification is, is a good way to go I think you'd say, I think, Jack, I think your modification is, is a good way to go about it, to say it can only be where we expressly allow it to be.
Where we expressly permit it.
And then we can, and that gives planning the time to go back and really examine that, that map and see what specific locations in the city of Farrow would be the most appropriate.
So the one thing I guess I would go back to is just a point, you know, to Councilman Burrell's point. If you've got people that are trying to make an investment and go acquire some property based on whatever action we're taking, and we don't have that
They better hold their...
Kind of buttoned, buttoned up and in the, in the ordinance, are we going to get in some position down the road where... I mean, is there a rush on our end to do this if no one's getting a license until in December?
I think there's somewhat of one, only because there's only, only a few locations that they're going to be allowed. So if there, you know that there's going to be, you know, one allowed around here. They may not have their location, but they kind of, they may have their city dialed in. Is that right, Mayor?
To protect, I mean, Jack, I think you're right to worry about that, because I mean, I think this is the kind of thing that people are thinking is ultimately going to be a pretty significant moneymaker. And so anybody who's watching this meeting, I hope you understand that if you go out and buy property right now, thinking you are going to put a medical marijuana dispensary on it in the city of Farrow, you are doing so at your own risk, because we do not know where we are going to permit that to be at this point.
Yeah.
It's not that.
You know, it's kind of interesting to me, we're discussing all this, where we can put it, seems like we're trying to get all these restrictions in, it's something we haven't passed yet. When, you don't have to worry about it, if you vote a no, doesn't matter what, what we did, absolutely no.
And I said it, I don't, yeah, but I think...
I mean, you're looking at something, you're trying to put a lot of restrictions on, you don't really want it here, you don't want it here and there, yet, you know, we're having these discussions. To me, it's kind of simple, something that's restrictive, I just say vote no. You got to worry about it. One point of view anyway.
That's, that's right, amen, that's right. So, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Marcus, I mean, can we add language to layer this at this point?
Yes, we can, it sounds like there's a lot of questions, and I think we're ready to introduce, but that's...
Well, we don't want to layer it, I don't think, I don't know.
I don't think adding one sentence changes much.
Yeah, I don't think it changes any, I mean, we just added sentence.
Protects us.
That says that we would have to...
Do you want the developer, whoever to have to come back to council for approval of specific spot, or do you want to say that it's only expressly permitted areas allowed by...
Planning.
Planning and zoning.
Yes, so it'll go through planning and zoning, and so in our zoning ordinance, it'll say, okay, B two, you can do this, this and this. Somewhere that dispensary is going to be inserted into that matrix.
Right, in the use table.
In the use table.
Right, and it may be, I might say it's going to be one, one, two, whatever, but it'll be in that use table if approved.
Well, but it'll probably be a little more complicated than that, because there are things and, I mean, you can't just say, for example, insert it into B two, because there might be some B two in the CBD, you know, other locations where it's not permissible.
Well, that's why, we have, we have, you know, asterisks by that, we'll say, you can always say by special permission, or not permitted in the CBD, permitted here, but not here.
I tell you though...
It can be a standalone ordinance.
Yeah, the state has done a pretty jam-up job of kind of protecting from what we're talking about right now, but it doesn't ever hurts to layer, you know. That map that Hunter created was going by all the state rules when he created that map to show exactly how they get cornered in, you know, and to give us a little bit of idea. We specifically did that, because when I was having a conversation, we wanted that to happen, you know, to protect us from the state and legalities and the community. So, but I don't think it hurts to layer, you know. But we would ask our legal to...
If you go to put something there, it's only, it's only allowed expressly permitted areas set, that's set forth by the map and planning and zoning.
That's your petition.
Use table.
Can you say which will be set forth by, can you say that?
Yeah, well, right now, there is nothing in the use table.
Okay, so can you say which will be set forth by?
If you pass this, if you pass it with that caveat, and they couldn't do anything until you get a change in your use tables. And then the use tables is still got to be subject to these overlays that won't allow with some elite schools and churches and whatnot.
I mean, could you not just put that in there, what you just said, subject to the changes in our use, planning and zoning use table? At the location area? Yeah, I mean...
Y'all want to move on from this one? We got a, got a few more things I'd like to at least hit highlights on real quick. Let's see, alright, we've got the proposed holidays soccer concession stand, we going, everything good there? Alright. The LED lighting package for Volanta Baseball Park, who would be covering that?
Pat is not here.
Not here, he's not here today, but I'll cover it if you want me to, I'll be happy to.
Alright, how about item number fourteen on the agreement with the battles? I know there's some conversation.
We actually, that, that was, we're going to pull that, only because it takes additional notice for anything like that. It takes seven-day notices, since the agenda was not published until Thursday, so it'll just come back to the next meeting.
Okay, so when we get to that item, or council will pull that?
What number was that, Jim?
Fourteen.
Item number fourteen. And then we jumped all the way down to item number thirty-three, which is Parks and Rec Committee just recommend, making a recommendation to approve disc golf course and name the fair field house. So are we actually taking action on these, or are we just acknowledging that they're recommending these two items to us?
I think they're asking for action.
Action, yeah.
And that's, you know, I don't know, we, Cory and I are on the rec board, I don't know if it's premature to vote on it tonight, but I mean, the field house, we thought is a fairly, fairly simple matter. The disc golf course may be seen as something that's, you know, maybe needs more discussion, but, but you know, this golf course is not something that's real expensive, and you know, it can be put up and taken down.
It's about six thousand dollars to do totally.
This is out there, the old Boy Scout property, family property.
Family property, right.
Is this for a second one or?
Second one, yeah.
What, second, what do you mean by that?
We got the one at the...
We have one at the Volanta Ballpark.
Yeah, but I don't know, they're moving it from there over to the next one. They're trying to move it, so it wouldn't be...
I don't think they're moving it.
So they want to use both parks?
They'll use both of them.
I think the, the disc golf is one multiple places.
It has, because if you have two, I was part of the original discussion, and I think one of the issues is, is that if you have two courses, you can host...
You can host.
Yeah, and they did one last year, and it was jammed up, I know, I saw.
Will it exist even work with the new baseball fields on the hill?
Yeah, they built around it.
Yeah, they built around it, yeah. That thing is good, I'm glad it's growing.
Alright, any other items you think we need to cover in the next couple of minutes before we just take a break?
Council President, I'd like to talk about item seven.
Did I skip that? I did skip, right over that, I just wrote the mayor's name down by that. Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that, I wanted to cover that as well. So this is the ordinance, this would be the, basically the on-call, on-call page, so.
And I'd be happy to address that. So as y'all know, that we have several departments, we actually have two layers of, I guess, on-call status. We have our utilities and public works who are on-call, and then we have another layer of departments that are also on-call. The magistrates, they have to come in and do a warrant, IT, customer service, communications, the warehouse. So they're all, they're all in an on-call rotation, which means if they get called in, they would get paid a two-hour minimum for getting called in or actual time worked. The other on-call are the other utilities that are on-call and public works. They are paid at a different rate, they're paid for standby time, which is sixteen hours of straight time, eight hours Saturday, eight hours Sunday, they take that call for a week. So this is just changing that up, we are actually taking the magistrates and IT and moving them to the second layer of the on-call policy.
So Council President, on the, on the magistrates and the IT employees, there's a couple of things that I want to question, and that is that they will only be paid for a minimum of two hours of actual time work. It does not say they would be paid at an overtime rate, whereas the public utility or public works employees are being placed, they're being paid at an overtime rate.
It's overtime, it's always overtime.
Okay, it doesn't say it in there.
It is overtime.
I want to clarify that.
It is, and it says, they're paid two hours or actual time worked, so, correct.
But the other one specifically said at an overtime rate, and the second paragraph does not say at an overtime rate. So that was, I'd like to at least, we get, we get that clarified. And the other thing is that, do we want to consider doing this for somebody that may be hired from here forward? Because if we, if we enact this now, we're effectively reducing someone's pay. And I don't know that we've ever reduced someone's pay. And that, it will definitely reduce IT and magistrates' pay. If that's what we're trying to do, then this will do it. And I just wonder how much of a cost it is when we're trying to retain employees, how much of a cost to us that might be. When you're talking a minimum of two hours versus what is now a minimum of eight hours, you're talking six hours over the weekend is really breaking the bank to do that.
It's a total in both departments, about, combined, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars. About forty thousand, actually.
Just from those two departments?
Just those two departments.
What two are we speaking, I'm sorry?
IT and magistrates.
And it's, it's only two personnel and magistrate?
There is, correct. Well, there'll be three, they have a third position.
It will be.
But you know, when you come in and you set expectations for when you hire somebody, you know, you can tell them, it's like a doctor, if you're on-call, that's the job, you know, that's the job. And you tell somebody that comes in, when you hire them, that's the job. But if you have somebody that was hired and that's the job, then you pull that benefit back. I mean, some of these few hundred dollars a month that they're, that they're losing, two, three hundred dollars a month is significant to some of these employees, I think.
You know, this was something that we looked at last year. I think the council challenged me to look at overtime and look at the standby pay and make some changes. And we, we did a big employee meeting and talked about it, and last year you chose not to make the changes. We didn't budget for it last year, and we're able to maintain it. We didn't budget for it again this year, thinking that we were going to make some changes. I'm happy to leave it the way it is, but it is a real cost to the city.
I would only just, that's the only change I'm saying for employees going forward, so that when they're hired, they know where they're getting into.
Yeah, I don't know that we can do that, I think we would need to treat everybody across my board.
Do you need to go back and re-look at the base conversation?
Yeah, that's, well, my, and I think what you're saying is right. I don't know that you could have an overtime or on-call policy that applies to certain employees and not to others. If we really think, let's just use IT for example, if we really think that the appropriate pay for IT is their base plus this on-call pay, then we need to change their pay, their base.
And that's...
But, but, you know, ultimately, I think, looking at this policy, and I'm remembering talking about it now, and I was, when I said to you earlier, I was under the impression that we made some changes to it, but it doesn't sound like we did. You know, Jimmy made a point with me before the meeting that, and I might be misunderstanding the way it's currently written, and that is, I think if you are on-call, you are entitled to some level of base compensation for simply being on-call, whether you work or not. Because there is some limitation of your time by being forced to be on-call.
Can't go out of town.
Now, I don't think that's a sixteen-hour, a two-day, sixteen-hour payment for being on-call.
It's currently eight.
Four hours per day for the two days?
Just a minimum.
Eight hours, totally can't.
So you're getting sixteen hours of on-call pay whether you work or not. I think that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Now...
But getting nothing is...
Getting nothing, I don't think is the right answer either.
Somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere, I mean, I think there's, and I feel like what we talked about before was some level of, and, and, you know, and maybe I've just mixed this up in my mind, is that, you know, it was a four, if you are on-call, you get paid for two hours whether you do anything or nothing. But if you do do something, you get two hours plus whatever time you work.
Yeah, I remember this, we had a mathematical debate.
Yeah, and I don't know that we'll solve this tonight. If y'all want to pull this and let us work on a policy, I'm happy to do that, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think we...
I would like to see that pulled, so we can talk about that.
I would like to see it pulled as well.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't, back to your point, Council Robinson, we're treating some employees differently than we're treating others in that, the way that new ordinance is written.
Yeah, I think it's got to be, I mean...
I don't know if that's the spirit of it, but...
Didn't...
Well, that's, it's not, it may not be the spirit, that's exactly what it says, though.
But might be already.
I think that the way that...
Am I reading that wrong, Council President?
I don't know that you're necessarily reading it wrong, I'm thinking we might already be treating some people differently than others based on the current policy.
So the reason that you separated, I think what Jack is talking about, you did IT versus utilities a little bit differently.
Correct.
And that's because...
Yeah.
There's always been counted two levels.
And that's because of the type of job and what they're doing, which I don't know.
And the expectation that they're called.
I don't know if that's treating them differently because of the job difference.
I would say, council, we should, it's already past six, so let's take a five-minute break. If we want to discuss this for a minute or two when we get into council meeting, if y'all want to pull it and go back and regroup, we can do that. If you want to try to put something together, we can do that. But if we're not going to be able to resolve it in a quick manner, let's, we'll just wind up pulling it and moving forward.
I would say, my request would be, pull it and maybe put it on our next work session agenda, because it's something that I think we really need to lay out to make sure it all makes sense with everybody.
Okay, alright.
And it's probably going to require some discussion.
Yep.
Okay, well, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back here shortly.